It's the good, the bad, and the very, very diffugently ugly. The good. Greg Popovich, the legendary San Antonio Spurs coach, himself a veteran of the U.S. Air Force, called out Washington politicians Monday for praising veterans while doing nothing to stop the brutal food stamp cuts that went into effect earlier this month. He told USA Today that, quote, "In a lot of ways, it's a joyous day if we all remember to honor people, but in some ways, it's a sad day because soldiers and veterans don't really get honored the way they should be." Just like the way it is right now. How many vets might have to do without food stamps because of what's going on with the government right now? That program is going, is huge to a lot of these families. I mean, huge. It gets them through, or it may or may not be there. Who knows? Because the government is not very functional at this point, as we all know. End of quote. Well said, Coach. Maybe it's time to give Congress one of your famous pep talks. The bad. CBS. Sixty Minutes correspondent Laura Logan finds herself embroiled in controversy this week after she was forced to retract a misleading story about the September 11, 2012 attack on the U.S. special mission in Benghazi. But the real baddie here is Logan's employer, CBS. After conservatives whined and complained about Dan Rather's true George Bush National Guard report back in 2006, CBS fired him. They've done absolutely nothing to punish Logan for her false Benghazi report. If CBS were actually concerned with the truth and fairness, they would ask her to leave. And the very, very ugly Mia Marie Pope. There are crazy Obama haters, and then there are really crazy Obama haters. Ms. Pope is one of the latter. Check out what she said about the president during a recent broadcast of the far-right radio show, The Manning Report.
And we knew very as just common knowledge that, you know, girls were never anything that he was ever interested in. He would get with these older white gay men, and this is how we just pretty much had the impression that that's how he was procuring his cocaine. In other words, he was having sex with these older white guys, and that's how he was getting his cocaine to be able to freebase.
Just completely false. And that is very, very ugly. That's incredible. Mark Taylor-Canfield, you have a report for us from the, an update on the Washington State Elections?
Yes, Tom. I hope to see you in Seattle again soon, by the way.
I hope so, too.
I have got an update on the Washington State Elections. I reported last week on your program that the self-proclaimed Occupy candidate Kassama Sawant had conceded to longtime incumbent Richard Conlon in a very, very close race for the Seattle City Council. And when I interviewed her on election night, she gave the impression that Conlon had won the race, and she was sort of waxing philosophical about the lessons she'd learned from the campaign. But, Tom, I guess one of the lessons she probably has learned today is never to concede until the votes are actually counted.
Right.
Because Sawant, who is a teacher at Seattle Central Community College, is now ahead of Richard Conlon by 41 votes.
Wow.
So things have switched within the last just 24 hours or so, because just the other day, she was behind by 1,200. When I wrote at Daily Coast, she was way behind, at least in terms of a city council race. Now, she's ahead.
Some of our callers called me up and ripped me a new one for even reporting that the GMO labeling thing had gone down because there's, you know, much of King County, I guess, hadn't been voted, hadn't been, you know, the envelopes hadn't been opened and whatnot. Is the GMO labeling thing pretty, pretty definitely a done deal? It's not going to pass?
It's still losing by three and a half percentage points.
That's substantial.
Very close. But the interesting thing about that is that the I-522 people took the attitude that, okay, media folks, because the national and international media was there on election night at their headquarters, they said, everyone go home, we'll talk to you in a week when we know what the results are. In contrast, Kassama Sawant was giving Conlon credit, saying, you know, it was a good campaign. We didn't win, but, you know, we'll try again next time. And the results have actually turned out the opposite. Five twenty-two looks like it is going to go down, and it looks like Sawant may actually win. The local alternative magazine here, The Stranger, is saying that she's going to be the winner because the trend is in her favor. Now, the ballots won't be certified officially until November 26th, but as of today, she is ahead in the vote count, according to the King County Elections Commission.
That's great.
And the reason that she's become sort of a national story is that a lot of her supporters got their training in activism from working with groups like Occupy Seattle. So she's gotten a lot of support from the Occupy Wall Street movement. She's actually a teacher at Seattle Central Community College, but she's gotten a lot of support from people who've benefited from getting their training, you know, through the Occupy movement. And she was only able to raise $30,000, got no corporate donations. But unlike with the GMO labeling campaign, her campaign was over, you know, it was able to overcome that big money, utilizing hundreds and hundreds of volunteers. We don't know whether Richard Conlon will ask for a recount at this point, but his decade-long monopoly on that city council seat is over. And by the way, Tom, the city of Seattle has voted in favor of districting for the city council, so we're likely to see more grassroots, non-professional candidates running for a seat on the council. Because currently, these are citywide positions, but within the next couple of years, each candidate will actually have to live in and represent their own neighborhood.
That's great.
So that's where we're at. And the C-TAC proposition that you mentioned earlier, the minimum wage being raised to $15 an hour, that is still ahead. It's doing rather well in C-TAC Washington. So it looks like that's been a pass, which, by the way, was one of the major platforms for Kassama Sawant's campaign. That was her number-one issue, was raising the minimum wage in Seattle to $15 an hour. So we'll see what happens.
Yeah. Boy, Seattle could really lead the country with that. Mark Taylor-Canfield, you are principally writing these days where, Mark?
All over the place. Truth Hours, Daily Coast, and I'm doing a lot of radio, so I don't know what I do, but my YouTube channel.
Keep an eye out for Mark's reporting, you know, from the Pacific Northwest and general, all over the world. Great stuff. Mark Taylor-Canfield, thanks for dropping by, Mark.
Thanks, Tom. Have a good day.
You, too. Great talking with you. Mike Papantonio up next.
It's interesting when I talk to a responsible gun owner like the last guy from South Carolina. When he goes into a store to buy a gun from a licensed reputable gun store, he thinks that he's registering his gun. Even the crazies out there, when you have a conversation with them, they assume certain things are happening, and those things are not happening. On AM 760, Colorado's Progressive Talk.
It's two o'clock. The conversation continues with me, Tom Harman, after CBS News, Weather, and Traffic on AM 760, KKZN, Thornton, Denver Boulder, Colorado's Progressive Talk.
CBS News, I'm Harley Carnes. The hard numbers of the Obamacare website first month of operation have been released. Let's get some numbers now live to Washington. CBS's Pam Coulter.
Harley, the administration had lowered expectations for enrollment numbers, given the disastrous performance of the federal website. And in the first month of operation, only 27,000 consumers managed to sign up for a plan on healthcare.gov. But another 79,000 did so through the state exchanges. And nearly a million more people have applied and received an eligibility declaration, but have not yet selected a plan. Health Secretary Kathleen Sebelia says they expect the numbers to go up in the remaining five months of the signup period. Harley?
I'm Bob Fuss on Capitol Hill. The numbers are more fodder for Republicans who've held half a dozen hearings on the website problem and voted more than 40 times to repeal the entire Affordable Care Act. But they are troubling, too, to Democrats who fought so hard to make health insurance available to those who don't have it and are frustrated things are off to such a slow start.
The paperwork of health care is a huge issue, according to a new international study into access, affordability, and complexity. America ranks behind many industrialized nations in those measurements. Kathy Shane at the Commonwealth Fund.
Much more likely have problems paying medical bills, even when they're insured, and to pay a lot out of pocket, and to encounter time-consuming insurance complexity and paperwork.
Hawaii's governor has signed the state's new gay marriage law. It takes effect December 2nd. On Wall Street, the Dow gained about 70 points today. The Nasdaq was up 41, and oil prices were trading right around $94 a barrel. This is CBS News. You see those kiosks with bicycles for the renting, and you might take one, except for one thing, if you don't have your helmet with you.
With bike-sharing programs in the fast lane comes the first bicycle helmet vending machine, first one introduced and attached to Boston's subway rental stations, allowing riders to rent and return helmets. Machines designed by Helmet Hub, a company founded by a group of MIT engineering grads, contract awarded earlier this year by the city of Boston. The first machine will be tested for a few months and data gathered before being introduced more widely next year. You're in on CBS News.
The Camp David Accords created the first peace treaty between Israel and any Arab nation, Egypt. That was 1978. Prime Minister Menachem Begin and Egypt's Anwar Sadat shared the Nobel Peace Prize over that. The CIA has now declassified 1,400 pages of intelligence related to those agreements. There are also transcripts of Security Council sessions and other key meetings now available for public consumption. Harley Carnes, CBS News.
Starting to see that typical slowing on northbound I-25, mainly between the Downing Street Bridge and Broadway, so just give yourself a little extra time in that stretch. About a two-minute delay. Down south, they're still doing that emergency bridge work that has only one lane open at the ramp from eastbound C-470 to northbound I-25. Give yourself a little bit of extra time in that stretch. The rest of the drive around the highways at this time is looking pretty good, but if you see a traffic problem, call the tip line.
And that is a model for the rest of the country. Now, Washington and Oregon have the two highest state minimum wages in the country. Washington is $9.19 an hour, Oregon is $8.95 an hour, and we index that to inflation. And, you know, that's low compared to what it should be federally, but still, and the result is, all of these restaurants that claim they're going to be leaving the state or put out of business by an increase in the minimum wage, they're still around. In fact, the knowledge that we raise it periodically every time the index comes out gives business owners some planning, some surety. Sure. So it works for them, and they've turned out liking it, you know. So, you know, we do have progressive, but this guy, Art Robinson. Yeah, now, this guy ran against Peter DeFosse.
All about it at Carl Wolfson.com. There you go, Carl Wolfson.
This is the Tom Hartman Program.
That's Carl, C-A-R-L, Wolfson, W-O-L-F-S-O-N.com. That's it? Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Tom.
Hi, this is Ed Schultz. You can catch me right here weekdays on the Ed Schultz Radio Show, where America comes to talk. Democrats are afraid to take the lead. They're afraid to tell the Republicans where to sit and shut up. We are being run by a bunch of people who think that they know better than you and I do. Majority, oh, hell, that doesn't mean any difference. They've got the power, and they've got the arm to do this, so they're going to do it. Join me.
Ed Schultz, weekdays at 10:06.
On AM 760.
Where can you get the latest news, traffic, and weather information? News Radio 850 KOA is Colorado's only radio station with local, national, and breaking news around the clock. Information when you need it most, 850 on your AM dial.
Start your day with a glow. The Gloria Neil Show, mornings at 7:03 on AM 760, Colorado.
Welcome back. Tom Harman here with you. Twenty minutes past the hour, live from Washington, D.C. Tomorrow, I'm hitting the road, and I will be, oh, where did my list go? I used to have a whole long list of all the places I was going to be. I'll find it here, and I'll tell you about it in a few minutes. Anyhow, it's over, so, oh, here it is, right here. It's over at our website. But tomorrow, today is Wednesday, so Thursday, I'm going to be in Chicago. We'll be doing our show live from WCPT. And then tomorrow night, if you're in the Chicago area, tomorrow night at, ba-da-ba-ba, 6:30, actually, I think it's scheduled for 7 o'clock, but the Frugal Muse in Darien, Illinois, and that is at 7511 Lamont Road in Darien. That's tomorrow, Thursday, November 14th. And then Saturday, November 16th, I'll be in Minneapolis-St. Paul. We'll also be doing our show live from WCPT on Friday. And then on Saturday, we'll be in Minneapolis, and, let's see, I will be speaking at 5:30 at the Operating Engineers Hall. Now, this, this is a somewhat different event. Rather than just being a book signing at a bookstore, this is a whole hoop-de-doo. I mean, the radio station is putting on an event, and it's going to be at the Operating Engineers Hall, but you have to have a ticket. The ticket, the cost of the ticket includes a book, and this is a brand-new hardcover book, The Crash 2016, my new book, includes a book, includes food and drinks, and this is, this is going to be a big deal, but you have to pick up a ticket. So if you're in Minneapolis listening, or in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area, or you want to come to there and hang out, this would be, you know, a far more, hey, get-to-me, you get-to-talk-with-you kind of venue than, than most, you know, classic book signings. And, but you have to go to am950radio.com to pick up your tickets. AM 950 Radio, am950radio.com to get your tickets. And then on Sunday, I will be in, actually, Sunday, I'm flying out. It's Tuesday, actually. I'm, I'll be in Denver, and I'll fill you in on next week. Tuesday will be Denver, and then Wednesday will be Los Angeles. Thursday is San Francisco, and, but I'll fill you in on the details of that as, as we go along in the week, because I'll be back on the air here on, on Friday. So anyhow, Walmart, I just, this, this just makes my head explode. Walmart, you know, asking their employees to work on Thanksgiving. Travis Geddes writing at, you know, we have to set the defaults on our print for this thing, Shane, so that it prints the website in the, in the footers, because I don't know what website this came from. But the author was Travis Geddes, and he says, Walmart is making some of its employees work on Thanksgiving, but the retailer's open. So let me just read to you from the end of A Christmas Carol. He was off early to the office the next morning. Oh, was he there early? If he could only be there first and catch Bob Cratchit coming in late. That was the thing he had his heart set upon. And he did it. Yes, he did. The clock struck nine, no Bob. A quarter passed, no Bob. He was a full 18 minutes and a half behind his time. Scrooge sat with his door wide open that he might see Bob Cratchit come in. His hat was off before he opened the door, his comforter, too. He was on a stool in a jiffy, driving away with his pen as if he were trying to overtake 9 o'clock. Hello, growled Scrooge. What do you mean by coming this time of day? I'm very sorry, sir, said Bob. I am behind my time. You are? Yes, you are. Step this way, if you please. It's only once a year, sir, pleaded Bob. I shall not, it shall not be repeated. I was rather making merry yesterday. Now, I'll tell you what, my friends, good Scrooge, I'm not going to stand for this sort of thing any longer, and therefore, he continued, leaping from his stool and giving Bob such a dig in the waist that he staggered back. Therefore, I am about to raise your salary. Bob trembled and got a little nearer to the ruler. A Merry Christmas, Bob, said Scrooge. A Merry Christmas, Bob, my good friend, that I have given you for many years. I'll raise your salary in endeavor to assist your struggling family, and we will discuss your affairs as there. Merry afternoon over a Christmas bowl of smoking bishop. Now, here's the question. What is smoking bishop? And why doesn't Walmart give a raise?
You're listening to the Tom Hartman Program. Call 866-987-THOM.
I mean, if it was good enough for Ebenezer Scrooge, it's not good enough for Walmart? Really?
And now, a look back at this week in history.
Hi, I'm Kristen. This week in 1532, Spanish explorer conquistador Francisco Pizarro captured Incan Emperor Arwapa in a trap disguised as a feast in the emperor's honor. Kind of reminds me of my family's Thanksgiving. November 11, 1620, the Mayflower Compact was signed by the pilgrims. Herman Melville's Moby Dick was published in 1851. During the Civil War, Union General Sherman's infamous March to the Sea began November 15, 1864. In 1889, journalist Nellie Bly set out to beat the fictional Phileas Fogg's time of 80 days to travel around the world. She did it in '72. NBC debuted with a radio network of 24 stations this week in 1926. Great movies released this week include Disney's Fantasia in 1940, 1990, Home Alone, and the first Harry Potter movie, Harry Potter and the Sorcerer's Stone, in 2001. World War II's Battle of Guadalcanal began November 12, 1942. November 13, 1942, the minimum draft age was lowered from 21 to 18. Ellis Island stopped serving as the chief immigration station for the U.S. this week in 1954 after processing more than 20 million immigrants. I'm Kristen. That's this week in history.
Hi, this is Ed Schultz. You can catch me right here weekdays on the Ed Schultz Radio Show, where America comes to talk. Profiling is dangerous. It can evolve to what it evolved to. And now, what, where does this leave us? Do we have a broken system? Should we have people of color and diversity on, on, in juries, or we don't move forward with a trial?
Ed Schultz, live, weekdays at 10:06 on AM 760.
CBS News Special Report, I'm Harley Carnes. The Obama administration releases hard signup numbers for the health care website. CBS's Pam Coulter.
Despite all the technical problems with the website, just over 106,000 people have made it through the process and actually selected a health care plan. Nearly 400,000 have been found eligible for Medicaid coverage or the Children's Health Insurance Plan. In what Health Secretary Kathleen Sebelia says demonstrates a strong level of interest, nearly a million more people have applied and been declared eligible, but have not yet chosen a plan.
The latest from President Obama. He is now willing to change the law and says he is open to ways to improve it. White House spokesman Jay Carney.
President has instructed his team to come up with options for him to review, and you can expect a decision from him and an announcement from him sooner rather than later.
CBS News Special Report, I'm Harley Carnes.
She's got plenty to say and the place to say it. The Gloria Neil Show, live and local on AM 760, Colorado's Progressive.
Welcome back. Tom Harman here with you and talking back to the mainstream media, three days a week, five days a week. Oh, are we having a good time? One of the old jokes, you know, I'm having so much fun, it should be illegal, or, you know, I would pay to do this rather than the other way around, although I did for several years. But in any case, it's, just, just to be very clear, today is Wednesday. Friday, Bernie's going to be with us, as far as I know, and Friday, I will be doing this program live from our Chicago affiliate, and I think I'm doing it live tomorrow. Yeah, both tomorrow and Friday, I'm doing the program live from WCPT. So the next two days, so you'll, you know, you get to hear me and, and, and pick on me and debate me or whatever you'd like, you know, for the next three days. We'll, we'll have a good time, and all will be well, as they say. So we're having a good time. And, and a special thanks to Dr. Mike Newcomb for filling in for me yesterday, and Monday, too, wasn't it? Mike, Mike filled in for me Monday, too. Yeah, yeah. It's been, it's just, you know, when you're on book tour, we're starting this book tour because my new book, The Crash of 2016, literally started shipping yesterday. And it's just, you know, slam bam, thank you, man. I mean, it's, you know, different, different town every day, different, you know, no two meals in the same place, no, you know, it's just incredible. It's just, but I, actually, as an ADD hunter, you know, I kind of like it. I, you know, I get, I will be exhausted at the end of two weeks, but, and, but you'll, you'll be catching me because I'll be doing the show, like I said, tomorrow and Friday from Chicago. I'll be doing it next week from Denver. We'll be doing the show, I believe, from Los Angeles. I think from San Francisco. I'm not sure. I, you know, we've, we're still working out some of the details of this stuff. But, and, you know, over at tomharman.com, you can get all the, all the details of the, of the show, what we're doing and when and where. So anyhow, I just shared, and I'm going to pick up your calls in just a second, because I see a whole bunch of people want to talk about various things. But I just, you know, I told you about Walmart and how they're asking their employees to work on Thanksgiving Day, or some of them, and they're going to give them a turkey. And Ebenezer Scrooge won up to them. He didn't just give Bob Cratchit a turkey, turkey, he gave him a raise. And it occurs to me that, A, probably most Americans don't know that. All right, most Americans know the story of Charles Dickens' Christmas Carol by virtue of having seen various television and movie versions of it over the years, rather than having read the original book. I used to try to read the original book to our children when they were young, but Charles Dickens was writing in the 19th century, and little kids don't appreciate that. So we ended up ultimately going to, you know, one of the Disneyfied versions, you know, the, you know, much shorter. But I have read A Christmas Carol several times, actually. I love Dickens' work. I mean, Charles Dickens' father was put in debtor's prison. Charles Dickens understood what it was like to grow up in poverty in the United Kingdom during a time when it was actually in some places against the law to pay, to overpay people. There were maximum wage laws in place in the years leading up to, to the time that Dickens was writing. In fact, during the time of the American Revolution, there were maximum wage laws in place in parts of England and parts of the United Kingdom, where if you paid somebody over a certain amount as an employer, you could be prosecuted. And the reason why was because the powers that be, the kings and the lords and the, and the wealthy barons, they wanted to keep the, the working class impoverished so that they would be politically impotent. There was a benefit to them of destroying the middle class, or of not having a middle class, actually, not having a large middle class. There was a middle class. As I, as I said when I set up the story before, Scrooge, Ebenezer Scrooge, was the middle class in England. The middle class was made up of people who owned small businesses, retail stores, farms, and, you know, the butcher, the baker, the candlestick maker, basically, and artisans and, and tradesmen. That was the middle class. And it was maybe, maybe, 5% or 10% of the population. And the very rich were probably 2%, 3%, 4% of the population. And the other 90% roughly of the population of the UK was the working poor. So anyhow, to that point, to that point, there are movements across the United States, and in fact, this one in Seattle right now, Seattle area Walmart workers are staging a one-day strike today, according to Politics USA, coming on the high heels of a Southern California Walmart strike. Here's the, here is a meme for Walmart strikers. And maybe somebody who wants to, you know, if you're, if you, if you write for Raw Story, or if you're right for Alternet, or if you write for Common Dreams, or if you write for Truthout, or if you write for, you know, Bobbing and Post, or whatever, take this idea and run with it. This is not my idea. This is Charles Dickens' idea. The Give Us a Raise Walmart movement should become the Be As Good as Ebenezer Scrooge movement. Ebenezer Scrooge actually gave his employee a raise. And apparently, since Tiny Tim lived, he gave him health care as well, or enough of a raise that Bob Cratchit could certainly afford health care. So tying a Christmas Carol and Ebenezer Scrooge into Walmart as we lead up to Christmas time, I think might be a great way to message what y'all are doing. Just an idea from the guy who wrote Cracking the Code, you know, the book on political messaging. Just an idea, but maybe there's some of you out there who will take it and run with it. I am hopeful. So I, pardon the long rant. I did want to get right into our calls, and the board is totally lit up, so I will be doing that post haste. But that said, as, and so, as Tiny Tim observed, God bless us, everyone. Hope you're doing well.
You're listening to the Tom Hartman Program. Visit tomhartman.com for audio and video archives.
And therefore, Scrooge said, I am about to raise your salary. Hey, it's Tom Harman, and you're listening to AM 760, Colorado's Progressive Talk, and
Some of them, Tom, are just crazies. They're Michelle Bachmann crazies, or they're just purely obstructionist, they simply, it's Obama hatred, and some of them are what you would call procedural purists that don't like the idea that you've had the president operating behind closed doors, creating these mandates without anybody knowing anything about it. But, you know, the, the truth is, this is very, very ugly, and I think it's, it's been way under-reported. And I'm so glad to hear you talk about it. I talk about it all the time. People that see this, and have actually seen bits and pieces of what this is supposed to mean, are terrified about what it does. And what it does, it's, it's union busting, it's pension theft, it promotes wage theft, work site safety. It, what it, here, here, let me drill down. Here's the way I see it. Since NAFTA and CAFTA, they have used those things to outsource jobs and create what we call a job scarcity. In America, you have 20 people competing for the same job. Hasn't gotten any better in the last four years. 20 people competing for the same job, maybe even higher according to some numbers. So if you say to that person that has just passed on the job because he actually wants decent wages, he wants a little bit of time off, the employer simply says, you know what? There's 19 people behind you. They want your job. It's that job scarcity that is the drive to the bottom. It's the race to the bottom that we see in places like Saipan, India, China. And so that's what these corporations want to create right here in America.
They have created.
They have created, but, but here's the point. TPP is the icing on the cake, and you have these vultures like Exxon, Dow, Kim... And you have these vultures like Exxon, Dow Chemical, BP, Eli Whitney, Eli Lilly, all simply waiting for Obama to buy in to what is nothing more than an extension of the Clinton years. You understand, Clinton started all this, uh, you know, Penny Pritzker, uh, Rubin, all of those folks, Robert Rubin, all of those folks are the core and the driving force behind this. One reason they kept it quiet is that was like a red flag. Anywhere where Robert Rubin goes, the average worker is going to lose, and corporations are gonna win.
Although this was not entirely, I mean, not to defend Bill Clinton, 'cause he never should have signed this stuff, but, you know, Reagan also started this with the most favorite nation status stuff, which was the, the, was the teenage and adolescent years of this stuff.
Yeah, no question, but Ru, but we got, we have to admit, Rubin drove.
Yes.
Uh, Clinton into making all this happen.
I'm just saying, a pox on all their houses with regard to this, Tom.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, and what I don't get is why Obama's doing this to the Democratic Party.
Well, I gotta tell you something. I know you don't wanna hear me say this. I, 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 look, you and I just have different opinions about what's happening here, and I respect your opinion. Uh, but I have an opinion. And the opinion is, the money that put Obama in office the first time was the Robert Rubin, Rubin, the Pritzker money, the Wall Street money. And even though he was out there saying all the right things, like, we have to do something about Wall Street. We're gonna lose our democracy if we don't do something. Uh, we saw him overnight change into, we have to look forward, we can't look behind us.
Yeah.
And this is one of those.
I'm not trying to cut you off, 'cause I disagree with you, Pat, because I don't disagree with you. I, I, you're right, and I don't blame, though, Obama for that. I blame the Supreme Court for that.
In part.
For creating a situation where, in order to become President of the United States, you've gotta make those kind of compromises, uh, which is not good for him, it's not good for us, and it's definitely not good for the Democratic Party. Um, anyhow, Mike Papantonio, thanks so much for being with us.
Thank you.
This is the Tom Hartman Program.
And of course, ringoffireradio.com for all things Mike Papantonio and Bobby Kennedy and Sam Seder. We'll be back.
Laugh and learn with Gloria Neal, mornings at seven oh three.